I'd like to call this meeting the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
This is Casper.
Here.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Here. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. We have a full agenda this evening. We do have two board members that are unfortunately out of town, so when you see a couple empty seats, that is where they are, so we'll get right to it. Superintendent's comments?
Just really quick, thank you to everybody for being here. And Mrs. Schaefer said we do have a full agenda, and at least we get to recognize one of our students, one of our staff members, and we're looking forward to that.
Treasurer's comments, Jenny?
I thought Julie Joyce Smith was going to join us from the Butler County Officers Office, but I don't see her here, so that was it for me.
Okay.
Like Mr. Miller said, we have a full agenda, so we'll move on.
All right, we'll go right into student spotlights. Betsy?
Good evening. Tonight I have the privilege of introducing a state champion. Jacob McDonald is only the third swimmer in Lakota to earn this title. A junior at Lakota East, Jacob has had a stellar season. He holds the team record in the 500 free, 100 back, 200 free, 50 free, and on two relays. Jacob competed in two events at the state championship in Canton recently, both of which have qualified him for an All-American consideration. Finishing the 500 freestyle with a time of 4 minutes, 22.17 seconds, and that's 20 laps, Jacob earned the top spot and has returned home a champion. Please welcome Jacob McDonald.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to tell you a little bit about how I began to swim. My oldest brother Matt watched the 2008 Beijing Olympics, and that inspired him so much that he swam for summer club team. That led to all of us getting into water, because my mom had to drag all four boys wherever she went. Although my mom never swam, she taught all four of us the basics of swimming. I didn't like swimming at first, because it was way too cold and way too early for me, so my mom had to bribe me with a new pair of socks to go to practice. I watched my two biggest role models, my older brothers Matt and Josh, compete at higher and higher levels, and that made me want to do it so much. Brotherly competition and the support they gave me is a big reason I'm standing here talking to you guys today. They taught me to love swimming, and they taught me the qualities outside of the pool for me to be the best swimmer, brother, and teammate I could possibly be. Most importantly, they taught me how to lovingly guide my younger brother to succeed more things than I ever will. What it means to me to be a state champion. Winning a state champion title has ever been a big dream of mine, ever since I saw my brother do it. Most people think swimming is an individual sport, but for me, it's not. For me, swimming, it's not about what I'm swimming, it's about who I'm swimming for, and I swam that race for Lakota. My future plans. I have one more year as a Lakota East Thunderhawk, and I cannot wait for my senior year. After that, I plan on attending the University of Tennessee, where I verbally committed to swim, and I intend to study to be a mechanical engineer. Thank you for your time.
Can you just mention your event? For those that don't follow swimming, could you just mention what that involves? Because it's kind of a different one usually.
Yeah. I swam the 500 freestyle. It is 20 yards, well, 20 laps of 25 yards. And so it's one of the longer, it's the longest event in high school swimming, but there is the mile and the thousand, but it's one of the longer events.
And what was your winning time for the state title?
4:22, 1:5.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What's your practice commitment like?
I practice a lot. For club swimming, I have two morning practices a week, and then I practice Monday through Saturday, which are all about three hours long. So it's a lot of commitment.
Doesn't leave a lot of time for anything else, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Tell us a little bit about your academics at school. What are some of the classes that you take?
The classes I really enjoy, I'm in pre-calc right now and chemistry, which are my two favorite, hence why I'm kind of going into the engineering field. But I'm in honors English, I'm in government right now. I take some medals classes, because I'm a hands-on kind of learner, so those are some of the classes I take.
So tell me, how do you balance? You're taking a pretty heavy course load, and you spend a lot of time in the water. Travel, getting there, doing everything that you need to do to be successful, how do you balance that?
I think kind of swimming and the dedication it takes has kind of given me a good outline on what I need to do to achieve my goals. And just balancing those two, you know, I don't have a lot of time after school to do homework, I mean, after practice to do homework, but I do what I need to do to get my good grades and do well on the tests.
That's awesome. Should be very proud.
Was your state time a personal record?
It was. It was a personal record by over a second, so it's a big drop.
That's great.
Incredible.
Any idea how many calories you eat in a day?
I eat about 5,700 calories a day.
Wow.
It's a lot of eating.
So freestyle's obviously your stroke. What other strokes do you enjoy?
I do everything except brush stroke. I do not do the brush, that's not really in my skill set. I can do it, I just do not enjoy it. But I swam the 100 back as well and got six, and that was right after the 500, so
Oh, wow.
I'd say that was probably one of my better events as well.
Wow.
Great.
Did you hate the 500 at first when you were younger?
Yeah, I never wanted to swim anything long. It was nice to just get in and get out. It's probably worse now that I'm getting older, but it's fun to race.
Well, the faster you go, the sooner you can get done with it.
That is true.
Any other questions? If you want to join us up front, we'd love to take a picture. Why don't you come up and join us, please?
Well, no, you too.
So Mr. Bass is the swimming coach for Jacob, and then Mrs. Davis is the principal of Lakota East, for those who are not familiar.
He has a picture of me, so I feel like I have to say it.
Congratulations. Yes.
Wait until Dennis tweets Brad's swimming picture.
Your swag. Don't forget your swag. All right, and now we get to move to our staff spotlight.
Laura's making her way up for our staff spotlight. I'd like to introduce Laura Cavilakis. I practiced that so good. Cavilakis. She's one of our awesome bus drivers. She was involved in an accident, no fault of her own, obviously, but a massive tree fell due to all the rain and weather that we've been having. She was driving students to the Boys and Girls Club, I believe, and the branch fell into the windshield, shattering the windshield. I got the picture from Mr. Passage, and if you want to see a picture that makes your heart stop, it's something like that. It's amazing that you were able to keep everything together, keep the kids that were on your bus safe, and to keep you safe as well. So we cannot, and I was talking to you a minute ago, and you talked about, you know, it's part of the training and part of the job, but when that comes into play, you still have to react the right way, and that's not an easy thing to do. So thank you for keeping the kids safe and keeping yourself safe, and we're really proud of what you did that day. Thank you.
I guess I'll say a few words. I just want to thank Susan for always having our training meetings and keeping us up to date on stuff like that. It really helps. And to my trainer Candy, she was a great inspiration to me, and my family and friends for coming out here and saying they love me and they're glad everything turned out okay. But thank you all.
Just a few quick statements. Want to wait for one minute? Does anybody? I know when we were speaking beforehand, I love that you said, like, that you were actually hit by the branches or part of the tree during the accident, and that you said you didn't even notice one of the places you were hit, because you were so focused on keeping the kids safe. So.
The tree came through the windshield, and apparently, when we watched the video, it hit the steering wheel, bounced up, came back and hit me in the shoulder, and then spun around again and hit the front padding and then down into the stairwell.
Wow.
Could have been worse.
Yeah.
Really appreciate.
The flash shattered all the way back to the second to the last seat, apparently. That's how far it went back. But since I had older boys, they kind of sink down in the seats anyway, so listening to their headphones, and one of them, I don't even think even knew really what happened.
We're glad you're okay and appreciate what you did.
Yes. Thankful for the training, thankful for Peterman, and just for you. I'm sure that it takes an amazing amount of calm, knowing that there's students on the bus, to be able to get through that, and we're appreciative of all you did. Yeah, thank you.
We were good. I asked them if they were okay first thing. That was the first thing I asked. Well, it was the second thing I said.
Truth.
It was PG, though. But yeah, I asked them if they were okay, and they said they were fine, so.
Wonderful. Well, we'd love to take a photo with you and give you a little something as well, so. Yes. Sue, please come up and join us.
Oh, because we're off balance. That is why we're off balance. You can have the right amount of people. Oh. I've got a lot of my head to come over here. I saw you very much. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, that was scary. Picture was bad enough, the interest was either. Put my coat here, I'm so excited.
All right. Now we're moving on to the first read of the school calendar. Rob. Rob.
Well, good evening. President Schaefer, Mrs. Casper, Mr. Lovell, Superintendent Miller, Treasurer Logan. It is my joyous privilege to share with you the school calendar for the 2021 school year, which is on the agenda for first read tonight. Just to give some talking points about the calendar. First of all, a reminder, some people get confused that we are always working 18 months in advance. This is not next year's school calendar. This is for the 2021 school calendar, so we're about 18 months ahead on the calendar. And if anybody was curious, the 1920 calendar was approved last spring and has been on the website for about a year now, if somebody wanted to view that. As part of House Bill 59, there's a requirement for the Board of Education to have a first read of the school calendar, make that calendar available to the public over the next 30 days for comments and sharing what they like, what they don't like, recommendations, so that then it comes back to you all as a Board of Education 30 days later for a vote on the final calendar. This calendar for the 2021 school year actually started back on Wednesday, December, I'm sorry, Wednesday, February 6th with our District Parent Council. We share this with the District Parent Council every year. We separated the District Parent Council into seven groups of four and tasked them with the job of outlining the calendar which you see before you. The purpose of spreading it into groups of four is we try and have representation from our high schools and junior highs, our elementary and our early elementary, just to give a different lens, because as a high school parent, you may view the calendar differently than an ECS parent, specifically right around the holidays, the end of summer break, when are we taking exams, when are we doing end-of-course work, much different conversations depending on what level your child is at. So we try and mix that up so everyone can kind of hear the general feeling. So when they were broken up into groups, we gave them several items. One was a paper of calendar considerations, which is kind of the main driver. Explains the why, the how, the when, the hours that the state mandates that we do, our contract language for our employees, so they kind of know why we pick around the dates that we have. We gave them information about House Bill 59, which are all the rules OD gives us about creating a calendar. And then we gave them, which I think is good to know, we gave them the copies of the last three years' school calendars, and then we also gave them a copy of the 2015-16 calendar. The 2015-16 calendar is the one that kind of lines up with the holidays. Like, I think January 1st is a Friday, so you always like to see, well, how did we do this in the past for some past history? So each table worked together for about an hour, and then they filled out what I call a table report. And on that table report, you have about 23 key dates. When is the first day of school? When is the end of first quarter? When is winter break start? When does spring break start? When is the start of third quarter? Things of that nature, and they fill it out based on how that table of four came to their calendar. Then what I did is I took all of those table reports, put them onto one document, and then it was just, you know, which majority rules? And so just took the dates from that table report and put them onto the calendar. Is what's in front of you. The only exception to the majority rules was when you see the professional development date that was selected in October. The majority had selected that Friday before that Monday PD Day, but after several conversations with our high school principals in the past, Friday opened to students when there's football games that night. In the past, our students have not made wise choices on how they spent that Friday in preparation for that evening. Monday night seems to take that tendency away. So that's why we, instead of going with majority Friday, we put that PD Day on the Monday. But all the other days and breaks and lengths of breaks and returning dates and starting dates were all based off of the input I got back from the DPC reps. So as mentioned, per House Bill 59 rules, the calendar will be on our website starting tomorrow morning for public comment, in which the public can say or have comments, whatever they would like to see possibly changed. Those public comments come directly to my secretary, and she sorts them by topic or general ideas, and then we review them. What I will do is, once we have those 30 days over, I will take those comments and feedback to the executive team, and the executive team will take a look, see, okay, well, we're getting 40 people who want this, or 80 people don't like this, and we'll have a discussion if we feel we need to alter any of these dates. So anybody in the public is welcome to go online, leave their comments or suggestions, and then we'll take those under consideration. And then if we have any changes, we'll bring this back to you in end of April, May, depending on when the board meeting is outside the 30 days for your approval, to then go ahead and accept the calendar for the 2021 school year. So hopefully that kind of gives a quick overview of the process and how we go about things. So I'd ask you, if you have any questions about process, questions about next steps, any concerns you see, a couple of you were there for the process as well, so you're well aware of how fun it can be to hear people share their opinions and wonder why you all don't want to do what I want to do. But it is a good exercise for everyone to kind of hear all the different views and opinions that some people don't like to start on that day. Some people do like to start on that day. Some people do like a shorter break. Some people like a longer break. And so it is truly a good collaboration piece with our parents of the community, and then also taking that feedback as well. So questions, comments, concerns you may have.
I know due to safety, we made the decision a couple of years ago to start closing in November due to the elections.
Yes.
Are there any other polling dates that are, I know that's the only one we close for. Are there any other dates that are a safety concern at this point, or?
Sometimes they have a special election in the springtime, and usually it depends on what's on the ballot. And so now that, since we're 18 months out, it's hard to see what may be on the ballot, because we did, three years ago, we came to you like in December, once we knew what was going to be on the ballot in the spring, and we knew we were going to, they were expecting a large turnout, we went ahead and we closed school. So if we see that, once again, we'll always come to you in advance if we feel that's needed. The good thing with our calendar and the state going to the hours, we are not close to that minimum threshold. We could have multiple days of school closures without having to make up any days, so we feel very comfortable knowing if we did have a situation like that, we could close school and would not impact going an additional day into the summer.
I think it really helps, Rob, that you do what you do in DPC. I think it does help to get people in the room to explain why you do it, and get multiple levels in the room, because, you know, you're right. When I sat in a group and a lady's like, well, I want to start at Labor Day, and I don't want to get, and I said, okay, well, here, how do you want to change that? And then she's like, oh, yeah, you can't do that because of this. They get, they see the domino effect of, you know, they don't, not, no high schoolers, they don't understand ending the semester for exams. So it's nice to be able to explain that to people.
Everyone would like to start after Labor Day and be done before May.
Yes, that's what she wanted.
But that's illegal.
Three weeks at Christmas.
Yeah, or if we had 14-hour days, then we could do that. But you have to work within the parameters that you're given, and that's why a lot of schools look very similar.
Right. I think for students finishing before the holiday break in December has been really nice from an exam perspective, and giving families a true break where they're not worried about projects and then having to come back and take exams and study has been really nice.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
That is hands down the number-one difference between a high school lens and an ECS lens.
Absolutely.
Because they just don't, you say, well, you don't understand. Given my high school sophomore, two weeks off of school, and then expecting them to come back in seven days and be able to take an end-of-course exam that counts for 10% of their semester grade based on what they did the past six months, just is not a best-case scenario for their success.
I was going to talk about the calendar, but you got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
And now we get to move to our demographic study.
Good evening. I just want to give a quick overview of what we're trying to accomplish here. As part of the strategic plan, one of the aspects of the new strategic plan is to do a master facilities plan update. And part of that plan is one of several components of it is to look at our enrollment forecast over the next 10 years. So as we go through and start looking at our facilities, one thing we need to look at is utilization and student population, and how that's going to impact our buildings going forward. So we may have some great ideas, but enrollment in these buildings may impact some of the decisions we want to do from a facilities aspect. So we have Dr. Jerry McKibben here. He's done a couple enrollment forecasts for us in the past, so he has a good history of our district, of our highs and our lows, and everything we've been through since basically 2008. So he brings a great perspective. He knows our district well, and he'll go over his most recent demographic report this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I've been told I have 25 minutes, so I'm going to try to get this done in 25 minutes, so, and then I'll leave time for questions. First thing I want to do, for those who have not seen the presentation before, these are forecasts, they are not projections. Two different things. Can you hear me? A projection is where you take a past trend, usually year-to-year survivorship, second to third, third to fourth, over a three- or four- or five-year period, create an algorithm, and then literally project that algorithm on your current enrollment out into the future. Very quick, easy to do, pretty simple, and almost never correct, because the only way a projection can be accurate is what's happened over the last three or four or five years replicates itself over the next five or 10, which almost never happens. These are forecasts, two-step procedure. First, we do a full population forecast, in this case by planning area, and that made it challenging. Fertility, mortality, migration, household structure, anything we can lay our hands on. And do a full population forecast, zero to four, 85-plus. The results of that population forecast then drive the enrollment forecast. And before I get too deep into this, I want to take a special note and thank the planning departments of both the Westchester Township and Liberty Township, who sat down with us over a span of a couple of days in valuable assistance of not only what's being built, how much is being built, magnitude, where it is, sat down, what planning blocks are being affected, really, really great help, and couldn't have done it without them. Having said that, I'll steal my little later thunder and tell you that 82% of your housing market is existing home sales. New home construction is just the gravy on top. So that was one of the interesting things we found out about. Anytime that you do a forecast, you have to have assumptions. These are broad socio-economic demographic variables that you use as parameters, if you like, when you're building your forecast models. And I won't go through all of them, I would do, I'll go through the three big ones. And number one, the 30-year fixed interest rate stays between 5% and 6%. It's 4.85% right now. It's gone up about a percentage point in the last year. Why is this so important? It dictates your housing market. As you'll see in later slides, if you don't have enough births in the district to maintain your current enrollment, you need people to move in, either apartments, or more commonly, existing or new single-family attached homes. Very simple rule. If you can't get a mortgage, you're not going to buy a house, you're not going to move in. Okay? So anytime you have a percentage for your assumptions, like a tipping point, if it goes to 6.1%, 6.2%, stays there for a couple of months, drops back down, it's a slight drag in the forecast. Goes up to 8%, stays there for two or three years, it's like hitting a brick wall. Your housing market will be half what it is right now, and I'll be the first person to tell you my forecast will be too high. That's a major violation of the assumptions. Okay? Now, there's a generational issue in this as well. Those of us who are old enough to remember the '70s, '80s, and '90s and the 2000s when the 30-year fix was 8%, 10%, and 12%, 5% sounds pretty good, right? To the youngsters today buying first-time homes, that've seen nothing but three, three and a half, and four for the last 10 years, 5% to 6% sounds like highway robbery. Okay? And there's another factor at work here. You may have seen the article that came out earlier this year where the average college graduate comes out of college with $40,000 in student loan debt. Okay? Which is true. But what the article didn't tell you was the average college graduate marries a college graduate. It's $80,000 in household debt. That's why mortgage approval is only running about 62% right now. So any fluctuation in the 30-year fixed rate, and we have seen a slowdown in home sales in the last couple quarters due to an increase in rates, if it goes up to 6% and keeps going, not as much of a probability as it was, say, in December, but still a possibility, it would have a negative impact on the forecast. Okay? The second one I want to cover is unemployment rate. Same philosophy. If you don't have a job, you're not going to buy a house. If it stays below 6% for the Cincinnati metropolitan area, because a lot of the people who live in Lakota School District don't work in Lakota School District or someplace else. So if it stays below 6%, we're in good shape. Goes to 6.1%, 6.2%, drops back down, it's a slight drag. If it goes back to like it was in 2011, 12, and 13, where we saw 8%, 9%, 10% unemployment rate, it's going to have a detrimental impact on your home sales. Okay? And third, and this is one that's becoming an increasingly important factor for the district, is the housing turnover rate. As I mentioned earlier, 82% of your housing market, existing home sales. And most of the housing turnover, the downsizers, are going to be people over the age of 70. Now, you'll see a slight uptick at 62, and another one at 65, but most people don't start downsizing until they're in their 70s. Okay? It's not retirement that triggers downsizing. It tends to be the death of one of the spouses. And we're seeing that as life expectancy increases, personal mobility, ability to drive a car keeps going up. We're now seeing that move from the early 70s to the mid-70s. Okay? As long as these empty nesters stay put in these houses, there's no more kids going to come out of them, and that's rapidly... And that's an, that's a rapidly increasing factor for your housing stock. In fact, that will be the dominant demographic trend for the next, now only ten, but probably twenty years, is the distribution and number of the, uh, empty nest households and when they start turning over. Cause this will be the bulk of your housing market, okay? The other ones in here is, uh, business, transfer rates, things like that, but those are the three most important ones. Now, the number one predictive variable for your future population is not fertility, it's not even migration, it's age structure, okay? This is the Lakota District and this is kind of a first primer on, on demographic analysis. Now, this is two thousand ten census, what good data is that? That's nine years old, that's horrible. Well, it's like balancing your checkbook, you have to have an opening balance, you have to have something to subtract to and add, or add to and subtract from. But it basically tells you where your indigenous population's going, okay? Pretty easy to read, zero to four, that's your preschoolers, elementary, middle, high school. Twenty to thirty-four are referred to as family formation ages. About eighty percent of all births occur to women in those age groups. Despite what you've read in the popular press, fertility rates have not changed much in the last forty years. They've stayed in a nice tight ten percent band between one point eight and two point oh children per woman in her lifetime. When you see changes in the number of births in an area, it's not due to changes in the birth rate, it's due to changes in the number of women in prime childbearing age. If you don't have women between twenty and thirty-four years old, you're not gonna have that many births, which is why you see this deficit in the zero to four. Not cause your birth rate's so low necessarily, it's the fact you don't have women in prime childbearing age. Thirty-five to fifty-four are the ages where most people have kids in school. Now, there are exceptions to that, I was one of them, I was a first-time father at forty. So I was fifty-eight when my son graduated high school and everybody told me what a nice, well-behaved grandson I had. But there's a few of us out there, people have no sense of humor. Fifty-five to sixty-nine are what we call the empty nest households. And this is where it gets a little befuddling for people, the Smith family who's lived down the road for twenty-five years, fifteen years, whatever, um, still in the same house, you've known them for years. But ten years ago, there was four people in that household, today there's only two. Why? Because kids have graduated, gone off to college, okay? And given the very, very high graduation rates and college participation rates of, of the school district, that trend's just gonna, uh, go up over the next couple of years. Seventy and over are what we call the turnover ages. So you can see a couple trends at work here already. You can see, wow, the number of people moving into turnover ages is gonna go up and keep going up for the next ten or twenty years. The problem is, the number of households empty nesting is gonna be going up at a faster rate, particularly if you have the mid, mid next decade. So it starts evening out a little bit. So yeah, you've got people going on the market, and if people sell a house in Lakota, we've been tracking on Zillow and Realty Track for years now. On the market, sold within eight weeks, usually at full price if not more. Really robust housing market. It's not selling a house here, it's the number of, the magnitude's not big enough. Cause you've got these selling, plus some building going on, but you have these empty nesting and the households staying put. That's why we don't use the, um, housing unit method for a population forecast, because it assumes your household size stays the same, doesn't have an out-migration component. And you have a large amount of out-migration, your high school students moving away. Now, I've got two different examples from two different planning areas and I picked them for a reason. This is Planning Block seventeen, the other one is twenty-seven, they're both on the western side of the district. And Planning Block seventeen is, is dominated by, uh, almost exclusively, single-family detached homes. So here are the people moving in, bringing their kids with them, but very, very few people in prime childbearing age. You don't come out of college and buy a house, you come out of college and rent an apartment. But most people don't wanna raise their kids in an apartment. So when the oldest one gets to like three, four, five years old, if they have the economic resources, they wanna go to at least a starter home. Later they might even move up to, uh, uh, move up home. But areas that are dominated by, uh, if there's no building going on in the area, these people are going to age into their fifties and sixties. These kids are gonna age out and much, much smaller cohorts are gonna come in, the enrollment's gonna drop, which is exactly what you see in this area over the last ten years. What's happening here is exactly what we would expect to happen because of the age distribution and the lack of building. Twenty-seven, however, has apartments in it, okay? Large number of people in prime childbearing age starting their families, hence you have a surplus in the zero to four. Now, if no one moved, everybody stayed put, this area would see their enrollment go up by almost a hundred and twenty-five kids. But it didn't, went up by about thirty. Why? Because a lot of the people says, well, I don't wanna raise my kid in an apartment and bought some of those other homes in going up in the district or in surrounding areas. So, uh, point to remember here is just because they're building a new house in the school district, doesn't necessarily mean the family that moves into that and occupies is coming from outside the district. You have a very strong internal migration flow, which is good because you now have a, a wider range of housing stock. The dynamics for homeowners and renters are completely different. Owners tend to be older, because they're older, they're wealthier, have completed their family formation, um, and move an average of nine and a half years. Renters, on the other hand, younger, because they're younger, they're poor, are still having kids and move an average of eighteen months, so it's a much more mobile population. So, uh, housing tenure, what we call in demography owner versus renter, is a very, very important dynamic to look at to see what the composition of your housing stock is. And, uh, so Bill, you also notice that neither one of these two planning blocks look exactly like the district. That's why you can't use district-wide trends and apply into all your planning block, cause you have various and sundry different definitions, uh, distributions to it. And quickly over the next slides, these are where we look at the individual household characteristics, households, uh, with under eighteen population, uh, household size. And the key point here is about forty-four percent, this is two thousand ten census, of the households had under eighteen population. Only about forty percent have school age population. And both of those percentages have dropped in the last nine years as people are, are empty nesting and aging out. Household size, three point five nine, that also has been dropping, because even with your number of households going up and in migration, because you have all of your high school seniors graduating out and the household size of the empty nesters is dropping. If you had five kids, excuse me, three kids, ten years ago, and they've all graduated out, you're seeing a sixty percent reduction in household size, even though the house is still occupied. Homeowners, thirty-five to fifty-four and over sixty-five, these are both proxies for, um, kids in school and the turnover population. Eighty-four percent are homeowners for the district, and that percentage is dropping as you've had more and more apartments built. That's good, because you are no longer dependent upon apartments in Cincinnati to send in migration in here. You now have it within the district, you have your own family formation areas. So it's actually a positive, it's making your demographic characteristics more diverse. Single-person households and single over sixty-five, um, fifteen, that's about the same, but this is going from four point six to about eight percent now, with the aging. That tells us you have about, probably over the next ten years, about ten, eight to ten percent of your households will turn over. That's why it's important to have, uh, percent homeowners and age structure and a mortality rate, that'll give me a proxy measurement on how many homes will probably go on the market in the next ten years. And again, that varies greatly by attendance or by, um, um, planning block. The attend matrix, Met Cropper, Cropper GIS, um, we've had before, uh, geocode your students. The only way this demographic method can work is that we put all the kids back in their home planning block. That way we can correlate the demographic trends of that planning block to the actual population. And here's an example by school, um, and the good news is, is you've got very, very few, relatively few students, um, not attending school in their home attendance area. This is ones that live out and come into early childhood, these are the ones that live in that area and go someplace else, okay? The closer that number is to the ac- actual, uh, we'll call it indigenous or resident population, uh, the more accurate the forecast will be. We just finished a district in South Carolina last week where over twenty-eight percent of their students went to a school outside their assigned attendance area. It was, uh, just a nightmare until we went and did the geocoding and did that for the, the K-two, the three-five, again, very, very little difference between the numbers, uh, under ten percent in all of them. And then this is, um, the individual year of age from, uh, the two thousand ten census. And what we're doing here is we're trying to, um, identify what we call the cohort effect, is again by planning block. If you see a school or a planning block and a, a big kindergarten comes in or a small kindergarten comes in, people go, oh, it eats growth or decline or whatever. My first thing is, might be a big cohort, okay? If you look at thirty-five, it's thirty, now it's thirty-eight A here, thirty-nine, up to fifty, down to thirty-five, up to forty-nine, down to thirty. You see a lot of variation in there. In fact, you got a couple of pretty good sized, uh, waves, big cohorts going through the, the district level ones right now. But we wanna identify, that's why we don't use trend analysis, because if you do that, you're gonna be all over the place, either high or low, depending on what your launch year is. But the very important variable here is, um, in two thousand ten, five-year-olds are kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth. Look at the size of the cohorts in there, fifteen, sixteen, 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 seventeen. Look at the ones coming in, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, that's that deficit I'm talking about. Cause what we do here is bring them forward five years compared to your actual enrollment, we can compare what the, uh, what your market share is. And here's an example of that at your district level, okay? By two thousand fifteen, these under ones are now five years old, that's your kindergarten cohort, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth on the line. So what we do is we take the number of enrollment, compare it to what that starting cohort was in the census X number of years ago, and calculate a percentage. And then, see now here, there'd be second graders, here they're third, fourth, fifth, sixth, track them through time, all right? If the percentage goes up, it's in migration, if it goes down, it's out migration. And from there, we can start generalizing and, uh, build our age-specific migration model. Cause I've noticed over the years that when a third grader moves, they tend to take the whole family with them. And you can make that leap of logic. And you can see where all the columns, rather brisk and robust increases in the percentages, clearly an in-migration flow, and this will vary from area to area. But even with that, if you look at the K through five enrollment in eighteen compared to the K through five, five years earlier, even with an in-migration, it's just now barely catching up. And that's the key demographic here, there's two main takeaways from this. You've got just enough in-migration coming in now to make up for that preschool deficit to hold your enrollment constant. Having said that, it is not evenly distributed across the district, okay? You've got areas that are, particularly ones with building going into it, um, both apartments and single-family detached, rather substantially immigration, relatively small areas. You've also got a lot of planning blocks that have no building in, going into it, exclusively, uh, single-family detached homes, and their enrollment's dropping because they're aging out. And as long as those people stay in those homes, you're not gonna see any more kids come out of there. I use my dad's house up in Indiana as an example. At one time, we sent four kids from that household into the local school district. Hasn't been a school-aged kid come out of there since nineteen seventy-six and won't be till my dad sells that house and allows a new young family to move in. Now, the neighbors have, they, they sold about ten years ago and a new family's come back. And interestingly, that was fifteen years ago and their last kid's graduating high school this year. So it, it's a dynamic that's not even, even paced throughout the area. So this is gonna be one of the key aspects of it, is what's the age dynamics of each individual planning block and they roll up to their attendance areas. Your, your problem's not gonna be so much growth in the next ten years, but distribution of students throughout the district, okay? Now, building permits, cause everybody's all focused on that. I remember when I first came here, God, it's hard to believe it's been eleven years now since I first came up here. This is where we stood the forecast, big, huge building boom all through the county, everybody was trying to get out of Cincinnati, move up here, grand old time, and they all came out. You guys were growing six, seven, eight hundred students a year, couldn't build schools fast enough, then the bottom dropped out, okay? It went down. Now, since the, the deficit here, the, the low trough in ten, eleven, it's come back pretty strong, more than doubled, okay? So we're seeing, uh, a reversal here and you're seeing more and more building. Two points here, one, it's not anywhere near what it was ten, fifteen years ago. But more importantly, all these people that moved out here ten, fifteen, twenty years ago and brought their kids with them, this is your empty nest population. This is why your empty nesting's going up faster, even with an increase of new home construction and new apartment construction. So yeah, it's up and it will continue to be up too, but it, this was with virtual no out-migration, this is with a large amount of out-migration of young people. Okay? All this information goes into building the fertility, mortality, migration models for each of the attendance, uh, the, um, planning blocks, this is the district total. So I wanna show you quickly how to, how to read one of these things, there's, there's two ways basically to do it. You can follow an age group through time, like take five to nines, your elementary age, with it in fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, you can see a, a slight decline, okay? Or you can follow a cohort through time, zero to four are five to nine, ten to fourteen, fifteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-four. So you can see sixty-nine hundred in-migration coming into there, a little more here, start to see the out-migration from high school, and then they're, they're gone, okay? Uh, median age, that's the age where half people are older, half are younger, median age is increasing, uh, from thirty-six going up to forty-three. Anytime your median age gets above forty, that's kind of a tipping point, you have a majority of people living in the district or outside of prime childbearing age. These are the components of change for the five-year periods. Births, you see them going down slightly, not because of dropping the fertility rate, because you have fewer women in prime childbearing age. You see an increase in deaths, up by almost two thousand, not because there's a plague or anything going on in the district, you just got more people we call prime dying age. So I know we gotta find a better term than that, but that's what we're using, so. Natural increase, difference between the two, and that natural increase drops to all under five hundred. Net migration, now people sit there go, we had more than twenty-one hundred people move in here or twenty-six hundred here, you're right, you did. But that's the net migration, number of in-migrants minus the number of out-migrants. Your in-migration primarily occurs ages oh, twenty-five to forty-four, bring zero to nine-year-olds with them. Your two big out-migration flows, twenty to twenty-two-year-olds and over seventies, okay? And as your high school, uh, population, your twelfth-grade classes increase in size, you see an increase in out-migration. And also with the aging of the population, you have more and more people in downsizing ages. So that's why you're seeing the net migration drop down, not because there's a drop of people moving in, there's an increase of people moving out, cause the cohorts, uh, the age cohorts. And my apologies to the audience, um, it's almost impossible to read, this is to make you go blind. So we have printed copies for the, both the board and the presenters, so we can read this. This is basically, what it comes down to is, is the district's enrollment net goes up about four hundred students over the next ten years. Now this masks a lot of trends, okay? It's not quite that simple. And the analogy I use here is a bucket of water, okay? If I have a bucket of water, I'm pouring water in the top, and there's a hole in the bottom. As long as I'm pouring in faster than it's going out the bottom, level will go up. But if for some reason the hole in the bottom gets bigger and it's going out faster than I'm pouring in, even if I keep pouring at the same rate, level will drop. Enrollment works the same way, at the district level, look at K and one coming in, twelve going out. For the intermediate level, look at, uh, two going in, six going out. And that's one reason why you have this abnormal dr- uh, drop in your high school enrollment next year. You just have a very, very large twelfth-grade cohort going out this year. About thirteen fifty, okay? Up from eleven ninety-three the year before and forecasted for eleven eighty-three next year. So again, another reason not to do trend analysis, the one-year abnormality. And you also happen to have a relatively small- And you also happen to have a relatively small tenth-grade cohort coming in. So you have a one-year drop of two twenty-four, and then it flattens out and starts going back up again as more larger cohorts start coming in. And you've got several of these abnormally large cohorts floating through the district, and that's a lot of year-to-year change, it makes for a planning challenge. Cause you'll have one level, and particularly one or two schools, they'll have this one or two-year wave come in, uh, taxes your, your, uh, resources, your space availability, things like that, but they'll, they'll pass right through. So at that level, you just kinda, that's why God has been in portable units, was it, you know, take care of those little waves like that. But on a more sustained aspect, you're, you're going to see more enrollment growth in the east and the south, because of building and, and what turnover you do have in that area, less in the north and the west. So kind of a divide here. So I can't emphasize this too much, cause I'm running out of time here. Your, your distribution of the trends is greatly varied throughout the district. Uh, when the twenty-ten, twenty-twenty census comes out, I think one thing that's gonna surprise people is the fact that the Lakota schools will have far, uh, over a hundred thousand people living in the district, very, very demographically diverse district, more so than it was in twenty-ten and, and two thousand. And, uh, the distribution of people in the life course within the district is gonna be varied greatly from, uh, not only elementary or middle, high schools, but also by your planning blocks. Hmm, twenty-eight, that wasn't too bad, so. That's the problem with those old professors, once you get us going, you can't shut us up, so. Uh, questions? Well, one thing I did forget to mention, and then you'll, might be the first question, how accurate are these things, okay? Well, what we're gonna, we do here, we shoot for is two percent plus or minus for the life of the forecast. So at the district level, um, that'd be about three hundred plus or minus. Think of it as a confidence interval band. If the assumptions are not, that we should be within, um, two percent of the forecast line, okay? Usually it's somewhere between half a percent, four tenths of one percent. Uh, we just had a school district in Indiana, similar size, three years into it, um, hit it right in the nose. Twelve thousand two hundred and forty-eight, and they had twelve thousand two hundred and forty-eight. Three years later, worst thing that ever happened to me, because now the board expects that same level of accuracy for all subsequent forecasts, so.
So do we.
Like the next year, I was off by nine, they just gave me all kinds of grief for that one, so.
Just to double check, I, I think I got this. The planning blocks you were using are the same planning blocks that we use when we look at distribution of students and...
Yes, sir.
Correct, same things?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones we just did.
Yep.
That's what I was wondering too.
So the last time I actually did pull up the forecast you did for us in two thousand and thirteen, and so at that time, you had thought at this point, we would be seeing a decline in our population at this point of about one point one to one point five percent annually, versus now it looks flat to a slight increase. What do you think is the, what did you find was the primary driver of those change in assumptions from when you did this for us previously?
Two things, one was the building of apartments, which you had not been doing before, and as I mentioned earlier, those are family formation areas, um, no longer dependent upon Cincinnati to send families out to you, you have your own family formation areas. And two was the robustness of your existing housing market. Um, your new home construction, single-family attached, almost dead on with the forecast. What was different was, um, basically, house goes on the market here, it's sold in like six weeks. So I think there's a lot of situations where there's homeowners sitting on a ton of equity in their seventies, figuring, not gonna get any better than this. And the prices were, were real high, the increase in, in, uh, price for an existing home was going up dramatically, much higher than we thought it was gonna be. I think they're just getting out while they're getting good. Now, will that maintain? That's, that's a good question, because we just see an uptick in, uh, home buying the last year, because everybody saw the rates going up, and a lot of people were figuring it's not gonna get any better than three-eight, three-nine, four-one, four-two, and it does not just here, but all over the country. And as soon as the rates leveled off after, uh, December, we've been seeing a down trickle, not only metropolitan Cincinnati, but all over the country. So we'll be pay, paying close attention to what happens to the housing market come April, when the, this year's season starts. And of course, it should go back up. Uh, and it's a big question right now, particularly with the economy. A large number of people think we'll be in recession by this time next year. I don't know if it'll be a very deep recession, but it'd be a recession nonetheless, which would be a departure from the last three or four years, and that will put some pressure on the housing market, so.
So our, our current number was also fairly significantly higher than what we thought it would be right now from last time? Do you think, is that just, did we see like lower numbers in any of our private school families? Did you see any differences in that? Or do you think programming impacted that at all?
Our time. Uh, and what, what's happening is, at the elementary level, uh, they're averaging about six percent increase in tuition per year, middle school about nine, high school about twelve percent. And quite frankly, it's getting harder and harder for a lot of young families to, uh, afford, um, private school because of the cost. We've done some forecasts for private schools in the area, and, and they are dropping in enrollment, uh, all of them. They just, and the big reason is, uh, uh, just not enough people in that socioeconomic that can afford that kind of tuition increase. And, um, the Catholic schools are faring a little better, but not much. The, the other private ones are having a real hard time right now. And I, I don't see that changing anytime in the near future, cause they, they've gotta raise their, their tuitions to pay cover costs.
Can I ask something more, Chris?
Just, just a quick question, clearly, you know, your, your stuff, one of the, like, talking points or bullying points that I think you're saying, that I wanna be able to tell other people, and, but I want you to tell me if I'm accurate or not, is something to the effect of, while there's a lot of housing going in, new housing, and obviously new families to the district in the areas that you talked about, that number is sort of offset by the people of childbearing age, cause that number's going down.
Yeah.
So, I'll clean that up, but that's essentially a true statement.
Pretty well in a nutshell. Um, go back to the one for the district. This is how I explain it to people, it's, um, you know, these people are, are now in their late fifties. How many people here in attendance live in the district? Please, raise your hand. How many of you have children?
Everybody should be raising their hand.
How many are you gonna have anymore?
Except for Sue.
Have any more kids?
Not after this one.
Not after this one.
No, okay, of course not.
Kelly kept her hand up.
See, there, there's your fundamental dynamic right there. Everybody who, who I've talked to, and I've spent a lot of time here, likes living in the coast school district. The only people who don't like living here are people between the ages of sixteen and nineteen years old. Nothing to do here, can't wait to get away, you know? Everybody else likes it. But the problem is, as long as you all stay in your houses and you don't go anywhere, you don't have any more kids, maximum impact for enrollment has been seen for your housing unit, as long as you live there. And that's this group here, okay? So if you, if you have those nasty empty nesters, just move away.
They'll like help me put my house on the market.
It will reverse the trend, okay? And they're gonna be in this group here, uh, as I mentioned earlier, with your existing home sales. Not a problem with sales here, I mean, just get on Zillow, get on Realty Track, look at the, any one of the two. Well, for the last several, the reason why the last several years, if it went on the market, it was gone six weeks, usually at full price. So it wasn't selling the house that was the problem, is how many of them? And you've only got this many selling, okay? So when you have this many selling after twenty twenty-eight, yeah, if there's enough buyers around, then you're gonna see a lot more turnover. So right now, you're pretty dependent upon new home construction being a driver for households to move in, don't have enough turnover, okay? Now, if that changes, um, and you wanna see a place where it changes real quick, look at the northeast where they put the new tax laws in, where you gotta cap your, your state and local, your salt taxes at ten per, or ten thousand dollars. You wanna see someone upkick their out migration? They're doing it, cause now it's not worth staying up there, they're going to lower tax states. Now, it's not as big as some people would have you believe, it was a noticeable and measurable increase, and it was almost immediate. These, these things don't happen overnight. Most demographic trends take four, five, six years to develop. That happened in about eighteen months with the tax laws. So, um, if you, um, put an impact fee on new home construction, you know, well, build these homes, we're gonna charge extra three thousand dollars, they'll pay for the roads, sewers and schools, that'll drop it too. So it takes something to that magnitude to really change the, the trend on the short term.
Well, and to your point, Matt, you know, while we might not see an increase, it may balance out, I think that's where the challenges for us are going to come in, because most of those families are going to be the ones with the young students coming through. So it's gonna create those inconsistencies across the district when it comes to planning.
Well, and the fact that the, that it's not the same, it's not evenly spread out, and it's gonna be heavier, that's what, that's our problem.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's none, you look at this, it's only five hundred student change in ten years, people say, oh, that's not much. Yeah, well, below that, there's complete redistribution going on.
Right.
Um, the places that have, and one thing to remember when you look at these forecasts, every child, third grade and higher, today in your school, is gone by twenty twenty-eight, okay? So you've got K one and two, all your preschoolers, and three cohorts that haven't been born yet are gonna be your students. Question becomes, where are they gonna be living? Well, where there's houses for them to move into, or their parents and all that. So it's not so much a numeric issue, but a distribution issue, okay? And, and this is something that all school districts, particularly the Midwest, are challenging with right now. What does the distribution of our seats, does it match up to our distribution of students?
Right.
And they always diverge, cause once you put a building up, you're stuck with it there fifty, sixty, seventy years. But the area's demographic dynamics will turn over every fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. So balancing that, that, that's Chris's challenge. Your hair will look like mine, you know, my, so, by doing that. And that, that is, will be the district's challenge to, to, uh, match up those two dynamics.
And I guess that's my takeaway, is when I look at this, it's over the ten years, like you said, four hundred students with the district our size, that's manageable.
Yeah.
You know, on the surface like that, that's great, but our challenge is gonna be okay, but those four hundred kids are, when you look at where they're coming to us, um, that's gonna be a challenge figuring out.
Yeah, and I was surprised he said it was mostly the south and the east, and we're seeing a lot...
I was saying, that didn't sound accurate to me.
Oh.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, that's what I was anticipating, so I was surprised when he said the south and the...
Down the east.
Okay.
But one that we settled first, I should've said, yeah.
That's where we'll see a lot of them, cause right now, there are six hundred-plus students, and they're over the ten years, it doesn't get a hundred and ninety students over the next ten years added to that.
Right.
Right there, okay.
Right.
You know, places like that, we'll struggle, or other ones, we'll see, like you said, we'll see like a little bubble come through, it's like a two, three, four-year period where you gotta figure out some, maybe different solutions, and it'll back down to being manageable. So, I'm already sort of, I look at the process, keep, keep...
Another way to look at this, and the good takeaway on this, when this, this housing collapse happed in oh-eight, it wasn't because people didn't wanna move out here, this was still a desirable place and probably preferred address in northern suburbs people to move to. Had absolutely nothing to do with the desirability, it was all economic, okay? They just weren't gonna build houses, and now it's kinda crawled back over the last ten years. But to get to remember this, is your demographic dynamic has changed dramatically in the last, um, oh, particularly the last fifteen years, cause these people are now probably in their fifth, forties and fifties, okay? And a lot of them, their, their kids are gone. And this was a huge in-migration flow. I remember you guys were getting six, seven, eight hundred new students a year. Well, they, they're, they're, they're leaving, you know? And they're gonna be gone. And it's just what their parents are doing now, cause the household's still occupied, But as you move forward, existing home sales will become the predominant factor dictating your future demographic, population, enrollment change, okay? It will not be, new home construction will be more of an isolated icing on the cake type thing. Um, what's we got here, about thousand? The, you know, you, you can build two thousand new homes in the district a year right now. If you don't sell any existing homes, your enrollment population's just gonna drop, okay? The, the difference here is when a new, uh, construction goes up, you see it. Empty field, boom, there's houses. Right along Princeton here, they're still building down the road here, okay? Existing home sales scared all over the place. That's where, and I hate to say something nice about GIS people, but it's true, that's where GIS comes in, because they parcel map, boom, right there, you can, you can see price, um, you can see how long it's been on the market, uh, how big the house is, how many, and I can link it in with my demographic data and look at the rate structure, you know? So we have tools available now that weren't available twenty years ago, thanks to GIS.
Chris or Matt, I'm not sure who the best to ask this, um, is this an, something that we share with both townships? This study that we've done, is there an opportunity to... Okay.
I think it's just good to help us out.
Yeah.
Help him out with this.
Yeah, I think it's just good information for both townships to know and to hear as we all have conversations together about moving forward.
Yeah, but I think both township planners inquired if they could get a copy of it when you were done, so.
Awesome.
I said you'd have to check with the district, cause once they give, you guys, you own it, we don't, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. If you have any questions in the, uh, future, uh, short-term, Chris can always get ahold of me, I don't know why, but he can always find me all over the country. And I'd be more than happy to add any further detail, or Matt Cropper, I'd also, you've worked with for years, he can add additional insight. Thank you very much.
I think your last report was a hundred and forty-six pages, so I'm guessing he has a fair amount of detail right now.
Yeah. And I may also add the report from here, any page from the SAW we could have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is our first opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, uh, regarding anything on the agenda, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move on to, uh, board reports. We have policy committee first.
You have, uh, two policies in front of you for first read tonight, uh, fifty-four twenty-one, which deals with grading. Uh, you can see that the changes are in red on the back of the first page, basically removing a line that was causing confusion, uh, because it talks about setting a minimum percentage, and then it says, uh, for students who complete homework, tests, quizzes, et cetera, and what we're finding, so if a student would literally take a quiz and miss all of the questions, they would say, well, where's my minimum percentage? Uh, because it says, sets the minimum percentage, and the minimum percentage was meant to be for homeworks. And so we feel that that, that language is covered in the guideline language, guideline language fifty-four twenty-one with grading, which we have been working, uh, with our LEA on to ensure that we have consistent grading practices taking place throughout the, uh, the district. So removing that confusion language, that's all, that's the only change for, uh, fifty-four twenty-one. The other one, uh, sixty-three twenty-five, talking about, uh, procurement for federal grants and funds. This is actually a leftover update from August from Neola. Uh, it was with our Neola representative trying to touch base with our treasurer, they couldn't, uh, line up calendars, but then they were actually able to line up calendars, talk about the language, and the only changes that you'll see on that, uh, green language is the addition, and red is the strike-through that's been removed, there's just a couple of small things, but he was pretty insistent that he needed to talk to our treasurer to, to clarify the rules within this, uh, within this policy update. And the other thing I would tell you is that Neola has given out their winter update. We're scheduled to review that on April fifth with our representative inside of that update, our twelve updates and one new policy. Uh, that meeting is on a Friday, your board meeting is the following Monday, so I don't know if we'll get all of those ready in time for that board meeting. We may have them for first read on the eighth, or maybe in May, uh, based on that second board meeting in April.
Certainly. Question on the, I often get questions on the grading, it's not, no change, so this is more just to point it out, really, that it does say here that, um, a couple just points of clarification, that grades, um, if something's going to change a grade by more than ten percent, that there will be notice. So I often get questions that it can happen, it's just that students have to be notified, and so I often get, that can't happen, it can, as long as the teacher has made students aware, and then... And then secondly, that academic grades are based solely on academic performance and not behavior, attitude, effort, or other factors. And that's another one that's a popular question. The old, you know, extra credit for the tissues is a, is a popular one that gets people a little frustrated, so.
And I get, and I give kudos to our LEA membership as we've had discussions starting back in November, as we talk about this, this move toward personalized learning. And being innovative, and so are, are the way we grade and the way we take grades, is it reflective? Are we still asking to do things differently, but grading the old fashioned way? Of like, well, you bring a box of tissues, here's five points, and it has nothing to do with what they're doing. So we've really put a lot of work into that grading guideline, in fact, working with our LEA president to make it a video that is shown to new teachers that explain how we do grading and ensuring that they're following our grading guidelines through and through that guideline language to ensure that we are consistent. So every teacher, every student, every building is following these rules.
And I appreciate that partnership, so thank you.
Yes.
All right. Community Engagement Committee? So do you want to talk about?
I just gave you the date, so.
All right.
I just handed you the dates, though.
We had a meeting to go through our upcoming meeting, our, the community engagement, community conversations that we're going to have. We are going to have one April eleventh at two thirty with our West students, that is going to be facilitated by our interns at West, so that will be interesting. So that's just going to be for students and not our general community. We are going to have one on April fifteenth on social emotional learning. And then May sixth, we decided, we had some discussion on the board, that we wanted to kind of have a, I'll call it a catch-all. We wanted to make sure that voices that had not been heard are able to be heard. And so we're having a, a hybrid community conversation where we're going to look at a hybrid between what we've done in the coffee chats and community conversations. So we're going to start that community conversation with an update from Matt. And then after Matt does that update, we're, well, prior to that, when we send out the notice of the community conversation, we're going to ask for people to have specific topics that they would like to discuss, have those sent in. Betsy is going to collate those and try to get any new topics that have, may not have been discussed, and people haven't had an opportunity for their voices to be heard on, to, to be brought forward so we can prepare for those topics. And then after Matt does his update, we'll break people in to different groups who can discuss those different topics based on where their area of interest is, and then we'll debrief on those in the end. So that's a way to make sure as we wrap up the year of community conversations, that everyone's voice is heard on any topic that they may not have had an opportunity to be heard on. So that's going to be kind of a different format that we're looking at. And that's going to be May sixth at six thirty. And then District Finances, Jenny is going to help us with that on May twentieth. And again, we're looking at a slightly different format on some of these, so where we're going to be doing some information followed by a community conversation, so that, looking at things a little differently. And then the Chamber of Commerce is going to partner with us and host a meeting for their members on June third. So that is what our current plan is to close out the year for our community conversation discussion. So.
Great. Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that we had a healthy conversation at the last work session and had an opportunity to talk with Jeff and Randy and just have some really good, honest conversations about the benefit of the community conversations and where we see them going in the future. And so just being responsive to that conversation and looking through these dates, I think it looks great. I'm interested to see how the general conversations go, but I think it's a step in the right direction as we close out this year and then have conversations about what the next year will be. But I think that after the work session, just to highlight kind of the collective conversation that was happening is that we all think that this is a really important program that we offer in regards to being able to hear our community and have that two-way conversation. And we don't want to see it go away, we just want to make sure it's still working well and making an impact, obviously, on the decisions that we make as a board because that's, that's the heart of why we do the conversations, is to make sure that we are operating in function with the community. So thank you to the board. That was a long way of saying thank you to you two for being responsive, yep.
All right, anything else on that? All right. Butler Tech with Lynda not here, I don't think we have a report there, so Finance and Business Advisory Committee?
I don't think we, have we had a meeting since our last meeting? Was that, I can't remember when that meeting fell.
I can't remember if it was before or after our last board meeting, but.
It was right after.
Might have been right after.
So we're just, you're still, we're just working still on a couple of policies, and do we have a meeting scheduled?
April twelfth.
Twelfth, okay, that's what I thought.
I'm not sure if this fits here or in the legislative, but can I just go?
Sure.
Last Friday, Mrs. Logan and I went to Columbus, I think it was Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday. For the Cup Patterson Working Group on school funding in Ohio. And so she's been instrumental in it up there, and we hear a little bit about it, but until you see it and see what it could do for not just Lakota, but for the state, you have no idea how much of a positive it would be for us and, and for other districts in Ohio. So I'm excited about the opportunity, I think it has legs in terms of something going to happen, it's bipartisan. And so I think, you probably haven't got enough credit for all the work that you've done for the last year and a half on it, and that's not why I'm bringing it up, but just to see it and to hear the little bit I did, I'm excited about what it can do, so.
And I'm excited that you're going to go back with me on the twenty-first.
If you say so. But it was good.
All right, so moving on to legislative. Kelly?
Go ahead.
Do you have any?
I only have a couple of things that we are all going, I think, tomorrow to the Southwestern.
OSBA.
Regional Spring Conference. Spring Conference.
Yes.
So we're doing that tomorrow, and then we're going to, on the nineteenth, to the Spring Legislative Conference in Columbus. And I just got an email today with like, I don't know, thirty bills that were introduced. Most of them, you know, are just in the introduction stage. There were two that I thought were interesting, both having to do with bus violations. We hear a lot of, from the community, a lot of complaints, I'm sure, Chris, you hear some of people not stopping for the bus, not going around the bus, you know, all that stuff, so now there's a couple of bills that make it, that are going to make the laws tougher, the consequences tougher. So I thought that was interesting. And then I got an email with fourteen attachments, I think, that I'm going to send to Melissa to put on board docs. It's the OSBA Legislative Platform and the Advocate, Effective Advocacy booklet. So, did you get that too?
I got it, yeah, last, last week I.
Yeah, last week.
Yeah.
From Jay. So I'm going to give the, just give those to Melissa and she can put them on board docs because they're many, many pages long. That's it.
All right.
Just one more thing to mention that will happen this week. So by Friday, we will get the governor's budget proposal. That will start the whole process, and it will go quickly. I mentioned the twenty-first, that Matt and I will go back up, and we're actually going to be trained on, we're getting now into the part where it's communicating the Cup and Patterson Plan, and so they're going to train us so that we can communicate better with our community and our legislators and, and all of that, but.
Can you remind us of the time of how all that will?
So, so the governor will present his, his budget, it will go to the House, so it'll, it'll. Sit in the House, then the House makes all the changes, it goes to the Senate. And there's not really, I'm not sure if there's a timeframe by when the Senate has to have it.
I don't think there is.
But it goes to the Senate, Senate makes its changes, and then they put a conference committee together to work out the differences between the House and the Senate. Then they adopt their version, and then it goes back to the governor. And everything has to be concluded by June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
And. It will feel like, well, it's going to feel like a, a short amount of time because a lot of things will start happening.
We were sworn to secrecy times a thousand last week, but it's very encouraging for Ohio. And I think it's safe to say that there's positive momentum behind it and that there won't be any surprises to state legislators. I think they expect something.
Right, they reviewed a survey with us, they did a statewide survey. And education was the third. Biggest concern of people in Ohio, the things that they, you know, wanted to see changed.
And Speaker, Householder has a direct correlation to the Deroff decision way back when, which I thought was very interesting, so he's looking forward to see it. The connections that they made, and everyone wants to get some, not everyone, but the feel is, the majority of people want to get something done.
Have the two of you been in conversation with our local representatives?
With our, our representative, but not with our senator yet, so.
Just part of what we're supposed to do on the nineteenth. The morning is a panel and lunch, and then the afternoon you are encouraged to make appointments with your legislators.
And the training and talking points that we're getting on the twenty-first.
Okay, great.
That came up.
Wonderful.
So the budget that's rolling out, is that in theory based on the work that's come out of the Cup Patterson, or not?
No.
Okay.
We, there's been conversations that have been ongoing between the governor's office and our group. And so we're not sure exactly if anything will be specifically mentioned towards the Cup and Patterson. And there was a whole lot of discussion about whether that's positive or negative, if it's not mentioned. But it's been very positive all the way through with all of the connections and communication, so.
We're not trying to talk in code or anything, that's just how it was presented to us. But it sounds like that the governor knows that it's coming, and so it'll be when the budget comes out, I think there'll be enough wiggle room and changes done by both parties in, in the House and the Senate, that it'll fly, something will fly.
Great.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Facilities?
No, I mean, the, the enrollment report was something that we were waiting for, so we'll digest and go through that and move on from there.
All right.
Safety, there's a small group meeting later this week, Thursday, but that's it.
And then the fifteenth, yeah.
That's Friday, the meeting at East.
When is that?
The meeting at East, the safety summit.
The safety summit with, that's happening at East on.
Is that Friday fifteenth? That Todd, is it the Todd Hall or? The Coach Hall, yeah.
Oh, yes. Yeah, 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 thank you for that. Coach Hall Foundation.
Yeah, we got, we've gotten like forty emails about that, did you?
All right, with that, we move to treasurer's recommendations. Approval of board minutes, approval of open enrollment district cap, and property valuation complaint process. Do I have a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations A through C? I'll move, do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
So I want to, on C, I did not put the list on there, based on, there was a lot of conversations that happened last Friday. I talked to each individual board member. And so I want to talk about that process first. So by March thirtieth, if we want to file a complaint on any value that is based on sales data that happened last year, so let me explain what happened. So last year, we review all of the sales data in our district. And if a business sold and the sales price is more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then what sits, the value that sits on the county auditor's values that they maintain for tax purposes, then we put it on the list for a possible valuation complaint. We go further than that. If the address of the owner is a Lakota address, we take that off the list. We never look at residential, only the business, and it has to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. That's the process we've been following. I took it one step further last year, because this is a very contentious.
Yes, it is.
I, I mean, I don't think it's any secret, it's a very contentious process and for this community. So what I asked for last year was, before we filed on any of those, even though I know I'm meeting those thresholds, I wanted the board to say, yes, we approved this list, and yes, treasurer, go ahead and file those. So that's what I will be asking for you to do again this year, because I, I don't want to do that without the authority from the board in this community. After speaking to all five of you, I am recommending that we have a special meeting when all five of you can be here and talk about this topic and proceed accordingly. Because it is, there, it's a very contentious topic. So that is my recommendation, and that's why the list is not on there, and it just says process for the agenda.
Now, what is the standard for most schools in the state of Ohio?
I have talked to other treasurers in the area, and I know you have experience with Northeast. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold that we use, some districts don't even have a threshold. It's on the list they file.
Yep.
They don't have their boards approval lists. They don't do anything if it's a local business, so we really are going above and beyond. I, I have never talked to another district that does this much due diligence to try to make sure we're not filing. Against a local business owner. I don't have any experience with another district doing that.
No, I, I would agree with what you just said, if I can. Yeah, very community friendly, local friendly.
So how do we let, what do we do now? Do we send them a letter? There's, there's actually a House bill, seventy-five, that they just, that is going to basically tell you how to do it.
Correct.
That we are not in.
And there's, I, I think it's been, I want to say five or six years, there's been, there has been a bill, and most of, of the time, it never gets out of committee.
Yeah, this is the same as three forty-three last year.
Yes.
And that, that went down, and they expect this one to.
Right, so. So every year, there is some. Some sort of an action to try to change the way that we do things. So basically what, what we're doing now, our process is, is kind of what they were trying to have us do on a statewide level. Other than notifying the taxpayers, which they already get a notice from the Board of Revision.
Right.
That something's being filed, so.
So we only file against, we don't file against personal. It's only commercial, and it's only commercial outside of Liberty Township and Westchester Township. So it's people that have a prob, I just want to make sure I'm saying it right. People that own a business in our district, but don't live here.
Correct.
Right.
Other than, one of the things that we've run into, which is, I'm just going to say, it's, it's almost impossible for me to know this. So we have filed against some properties which lease out the properties to local business owners or local business people. So there have been instances where we have filed on an owner who has an address even in another state, but they're leasing property to people who live in our community. And so therefore, what has come back to me is, well, you're still filing against local business owners. I, I have no way known that because I don't have access to all of those lease agreements.
Right, right.
But their, their leasing, it's not the same thing, correct?
Well, their rent would go up.
What their, what their argument back to me has been is, they're passing it along to us. Because we're leasing the property. So while we're not the owner, we're still paying that tax bill because they're passing along to us.
What happens Jenny, when we file one of these complaints? What, like, we filed, is the person gets notified. Is there a process for reaching out to you? And not calling a board member?
So, so we file, so there's a couple ways this happens. So, the list that I bring to you in March is the list that I say, I believe we need to file an original complaint. Which is, please take a look at this value. It isn't, once we file it, it doesn't automatically happen. It goes to the Board of Revision, they review it, they make a determination. If it's something we don't believe in, we can appeal. The other way that we can file is through an appeal. So, businesses have the ability to file an original complaint. To say, I want my value lowered. So then we take a look at all of those, and again, apply that same thing. If it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not a local person, then we'll, you know, look at that, that appeal. They get notified from the Board of Revision that a complaint has been filed. And then a hearing date is set up, and it proceeds accordingly. Sometimes they will get an appraisal, sometimes we'll get an appraisal if we're really far apart. And I, I don't know, if a business owner reaches out to a board member. Then I have had board members reach out to me and say, a business owner has contacted them. Very rarely, I'm trying to think if it's ever happened to me, no. I've never had a business owner reach out to me personally. It has always been through a board member and then contacted me. Or even to county auditor. I remember once even the county auditor contacting me. Because somebody had contacted him through the B O R process, but. It's strange.
It seems like they should, yeah, it seems like you should be getting the phone call, or the email, or the. It seems like it shouldn't, it seems like if, if I got a call from someone, I think my response would give them your contact information.
That's what you do for me with a student issue.
Right, right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't handle a student issue, just like I wouldn't, there shouldn't, in my opinion, any back and forth between us and the business owner. It should go to you, so. And we're doing this not as a, you know, a way of like trying to rake in more money. There's only so much money that comes in, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, because it took me a whole year to understand this. If the property owner is paying less, we still have to collect the same amount of taxes. So the rest of the people paying taxes have to eat that portion. Is that correct?
So, the, the theory behind it is exactly that, is the distribution of the tax base. So, the reason why school districts do this is to make sure that everyone's being assessed taxes. Based on the correct value.
Another way to say that, and I'm listening, is, is if we made a change, then people that live here are going to be paying more.
Right, everybody.
As a business owner that doesn't live here.
That's, that's how I understand it as well. I do think that we need a, a meeting where the five of us can sit down and have that conversation.
By March thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be done by March thirtieth.
That the next part of our.
We have that later on the agenda. So, we need to amend our motion. Because I had a motion for, requested a motion for treasurer's recommendations A through C. So, do we amend the motion? Or do I start and ask for a new motion?
It's really not an action, it's not an actionable item on C. So, I don't think you need to amend it.
It looks like it's just, yeah, since it's a process.
So, I still would like discussion on item B as well. For approval of open enrollment district cap. You had sent us a note, and if you want to discuss what your recommendation is for open enrollment.
Sure. So, we started back in school year two thousand twelve and thirteen. With open enrollment, allowing students to come into our district. And I think it's pretty timely with the McKibben study. And I love the graph where it showed that, you know, hey, our enrollment tanked. And that's really when we said, doesn't it make sense if we have empty seats that we allow students to come in? The other thing that was happening is our, our open enrollment out. Which shows up as a deduction on our payments that we receive from the state. There's over a million dollars that is being transferred from our district to other districts. For the students who leave us and go to another district for open enrollment. So, back at that time, all we wanted to do was, if a student was leaving us, we'd allow a student to come in. And we really wanted it to just be net zero, like no financial impact, no staff impact. And all of that. So, what we're recommending is to just stick that two hundred and twenty-five. Which is our district cap that we've used for the past few years. To stick with that, allow the students who leave us throughout the year. Or, when they're moving throughout the year, to also allow them to stay with us through the year and finish it out. We have not, and I'm looking at Rob Vogelmann, we have not accepted a new application for a new student. Three years? In three years.
Okay.
So, these, these truly are Lakota kids that are occupying a seat right now. And we're not, we're just saying, just keep it as is, so.
Do we, do we, um, are you, once you're here, you're here, or do we evaluate it every year?
Every year.
So, there's a chance that if you're here in the sixth grade, that when it comes time to seventh, we may not have room?
Correct.
Okay.
The other thing that we do is, if you want to go to Cherokee, we just mentioned Cherokee. We can look at that, and, and we do. We say, there's no room at Cherokee.
That's what I was going to ask next.
We have a, a seat in third grade in Freedom, but we do not have any at Cherokee. So, we take a look at it every year on where the request is and where we actually have spots. And we might have to move and shift some kids, but our resident kids are number one. And then all the others, and, and the resident kids, so we, we have open enrollment, if you will, within the district. So those.
Right.
The forms that they fill out. And how many of those do we get a year?
About a thousand.
And do we honor all of those?
As we can.
And they're first. So, we work with those first, and then we deal with the open enrollment.
And then we don't ever, we do the same thing with those thousand, we don't ever overcrowd a school that just be.
Okay.
But we want to make sure that when somebody moves mid-year, they let us know. And then they go into this open enrollment number, because they can't apply that following year. Because we're not accepting new open enrollment applications if they apply that following year.
Right. They need to be an existing student.
So, if they're an existing student in sixth grade, and they move halfway through their sixth grade year, we let them stay for the end of the seventh, sixth grade year, do we then guarantee they can stay for seventh?
There's, there's never a guarantee, but they're, they're an existing student, and they get priority.
Okay.
And we then get funded from their new district.
Right.
Versus if they didn't notify us, we don't get that funding. So.
Okay.
Alright, so I wanted to make sure that was clarified before we voted. Alright, so any other discussion on these items before Jenny calls the roll? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we're moving on to superintendent's recommendations. We have approval of personnel items, approval of field trips, and approval of donations. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Nope. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. Alright, now the challenge of setting a special meeting date and time to try to have a discussion with the entire board. So.
We're going to need a rubric.
I know that. We have spring break with some folks going out of town. I know we have a. We have two conferences that board members are attending. I believe Linda's attending a policy conference. And four of us are attending the National School Board Association Conference. So.
Brad's out all of spring break.
So.
What about? I'm just trying to throw a date out. Friday morning, the twenty-ninth.
Is Linda out this entire week? Do we know that? So she's gone this entire week?
So she won't be here tomorrow night?
No, right. Or Wednesday, right.
So, and then Brad's out the entire following week?
I'm, yes.
When do you leave, Brad?
Uh, we, I leave on the sixteenth.
And then, when does Linda get back?
She said she was gone the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth.
No, I mean, is she gone like from now till when?
I think next Monday.
Next Monday, okay.
I don't know that for sure, but I think that's.
Yeah.
So, and then she's gone the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth. And then we leave the afternoon of the twenty-ninth. So, the morning of the twenty-ninth would be the only possible day.
Available the morning of the twenty-ninth?
We don't know for certain.
I could do the afternoon of the twenty-third on a Saturday. My flight's back in by one. So if we want to do a late day, if she leaves on the twenty-fourth. I know people don't want to do a meeting on a Saturday, but.
Wouldn't be long though, hopefully. And it would be better than, well.
Unless I love the warm weather and decide just not to come back.
So.
Saturday, two to four was part of her possibilities.
So, Saturday was part of her possibilities?
Two to four.
Two to four on Saturday, the twenty-third?
I can do, um, I can do a three.
Jenny, are you still here on the twenty-third? I think I could.
Want to try that? Do we know if Todd's available?
I can do the twenty-third at three, if that's what we're going to do.
We want to put a hard and fast.
So, let's try three.
Well, three, Brad said, because he'll be flying back in.
At three.
Three twenty-three at three?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be tight, but I'll be here.
And he'll be ten.
Over at central office, maybe in the. So.
Do we want a backup date?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
Do we want to back up then on the morning of the twenty-ninth, like at eight-thirty?
We have, uh, not that, we don't have to go, but there's a fanfare that morning at eight, so can we do a nine?
Twenty-ninth at nine AM.
What fanfare is it? Which, where is it?
It is.
Cherokee.
Cherokee.
Cherokee. So, it's fairly close to central office.
And the fanfare's at eight?
Seven fifty to eight twenty.
Yeah, they start this school at eight twenty. So, could we go directly from the fanfare?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
So, if we did eight forty-five?
Eight forty-five? Or just whenever the fanfare's over?
Well, we have to notice it though, at a specific time.
Right, eight forty-five. That'll be the backup, three twenty-nine.
Yeah, I think that would be the backup.
Jenny, is that good with you?
Yes, I, well, I will be on the phone.
I know, but it'll be very early.
It'll be very early, but I.
So let's hope three twenty-three works. Because we don't know what we're going to get in Jenny at five forty-five.
It'll be, okay, I'll make either one work.
Stay awake.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll go with three twenty-three as our first choice then.
Alright, now that we got through, apologize for that minutia. Now, we have our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, they may do so at this time.
I have a question for Mrs. Logan, and I am not so familiar with the property value complaint process. But it sounds like it, every property sale, you know, business sale is, is filed as a complaint. And how does that meld with the goal of the township trustees, where they're always trying to be business friendly? And I know that these comments are the only thing between me and my dinner, so I make this question quick. I hope your answer is short for me too, please.
Yes. So, we review the sales, so any business that's sold.
Should we make sure there are no other public?
Oh, yes.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one.
Okay, sorry.
She's all excited.
So, we review all, only sales. So, if any, if it's an existing business and it does not change hands, and it has to be an arm's length. Changing of, of a business, so if I own a business and I sold it to my son or daughter, that's not an arm's length transaction either. So, it's an actual sale of a property, and we review all of those. If the sale of the business is more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. Then we review it for a complaint. Yeah. So, it's, it's not every, we don't look at every business every year, just sales. Correct. We review it, I bring that list to the, to the board, and then we take action.
And how many have we had Jenny, just to give?
It's only the difference is two fifty, right?
Correct, the difference. So, if it's, if it's sold, and the difference between what's on the county auditor's records. Is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what the sales price is. It's the difference between the sales price and what's on the county auditor's books.
Sale price and the value.
So, if I sold a business and the county auditor has the value at ten million dollars. But I sold that business for fifteen million dollars, then we're more than likely going to file a complaint and say. That business, you ought to look at the taxes on that, because the sales price says the value's fifteen million dollars, not ten.
And we don't do it often. It's not like we have hundreds of these.
Not new.
No.
Not new.
And it, it's, it's been happening, gosh, before I came.
Do you recall last year how many that was? It seems like it was less than twenty, as I recall.
I was going to say, fifteen is sticking in my head, but I.
It could have been fifteen, I mean. No, it's, it's not a, a big volume. It's probably fifteen to twenty.
Alright. We'll move to closing comments. We'll start with you, Brad. Sorry.
You know what, I don't think I have anything tonight. No.
I don't think I have anything. I mean, um, the boys' basketball, Lakota's boys' basketball team is in the Sweet Sixteen. Playing on Wednesday, so that's cool. That's all I have.
I did see Mr. Miller go running by in the Shamrock Shuffle. It's kind of like lightning. Running by.
I was not, I, I, you passed me as I was walking, so I was.
He didn't take my water though, when I was handing out the water, so.
I did take your water.
I had a time to beat.
I noticed you weren't running with the student who wanted to run with you. They were way ahead of you, weren't they?
Who, which student?
I don't know, the kid who said he wanted to run with you, the woman who came up and said, was his name Mason? It might have been Mason.
Might have been. There was a teacher from Indy that ran with me for half the race. I think she was pacing me to a good time. And then she went, broke off for the ten K, and I did not.
It was a very cold Shamrock Shuffle.
It was.
Go ahead Jenny.
I'm still thinking about the demographic study, and that, that's a good way to kick off the importance of our facilities. And we really need to take a look at, at where we are, where we're going to in the future. And, and how this district is, is changing with those planning blocks. And, and how do we plan accordingly and, and make those changes? But, you know, facility. But, you know, facilities is, we're going to be looking at it. So it's a good way to kick it off. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, to all that. And the only other thing I would say is, I'm looking forward to State of the Schools Wednesday night at 6:15 for our student, or our school spotlights. And then very excited about the video that we're going to show. Bring your tissues.
Oh, why do you do that to us?
I'm not kidding.
You're killing me.
Congratulations to both of our bands that competed on Friday and Saturday over in Fairfield, and did very well. And we had some state competitors in gymnastics, I understand. And I'm sure there are other sports as well.
Robotics, we had a robotics competition that came in second.
So we have a lot of athletes that have been doing very well as well right now. So congratulations to everyone who's made it so far, not just our state champion. This weekend, there's been a lot to celebrate across, across many different areas of expertise. Oh, and the overture awards were recognized downtown this weekend. And I believe that that is the first time we've had someone in quite some time down at that competition. And we had a student who actually won that award.
You mean two?
We had two compete, and one, one who actually won.
Trey.
So that was a wonderful recognition as well. So all, all spectrums of our student success.
We forgot to mention two, Leeds Pie Day. Gosh, when was that? Was that a couple weeks ago?
Last Friday.
Was it last Friday?
We could go Friday.
I had an opportunity to go over there, and it's such a phenomenal event. And it's packed. I mean, it is packed. It was over at Lakota East this year. But what was cool is they have activities, I mean, every age. I mean, we took our daughter, who is four, and just, she just loved it. Loved every minute of it. We got to do a lot of fun activities. And just seeing a bunch of different families there was really nice. So thank you to Leeds for organizing that. That's a, I can only imagine
I know, it was, it's amazing.
So for those who don't know, Leeds is our parent support group who supports our gifted learners. And they organize a science STEAM day, STEAM evening. And they had over 2,000
Oh, wow.
people come through the door this year. So, and it's all volunteer driven, but they have support from all the different schools. Typically set up a booth, as well as many different vendors come in and show off different things, so.
It's probably the first time in my life that I stood in line for a math event. The doors opened, I think it was like at 6:30 or something like that. And there was a line at 6:15 to get into the building.
So I hear that one of the biggest hits was you could actually touch a human brain. So that's pretty, pretty cool. So.
I did, too. I missed that, too. I didn't know that. Not that I would touch it, but
And they had kids displaying their work as well. So with that, do I have a motion to enter into executive session for a conference with an attorney concerning disputes? Are the, are the subject of pending or imminent court action?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jenny, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. And we do not anticipate taking any, we will not be taking any action when we come out of executive session.